Thank you all for joining us this evening. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Socorro ISD is being held June 18th, 2019, and the time is 6:01. Again, thank you all for joining us. If you'll please stand to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance that's being led tonight by Jayden Kearney, who is a fifth grader at Waco Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Great job, Jayden. Thank you so much. And now we'll move on to Superintendent's comments. Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the Board. I am very proud to announce the newest members of our elite leadership team. So, as I call your name, please stand to be recognized. First, we have new Assistant Principal at Eldorado High School, Ms. Irene Mendez. New Assistant Principal at Cactus Trails Elementary, Ms. Nancy Gurekwe. New Assistant Principal at Cactus Trail Elementary, Monica Hernando. Also, new Principal at Lujan Chavez Elementary, Ms. Gina Excessry. New Assistant Principal at Cybert, Ms. Cynthia Mercado. Also, new Athletic Director for our district is Mr. Jimmy Calderon. Congratulations to all these new outstanding leaders for SISD. I'm confident that they'll all have a tremendous, tremendous impact on our students and district as a whole. As I've said millions and millions of times, that achieving success as a team is our district's legacy. Our district, we continue to grow, and our legacy as a team will also continue to grow. So, these are very exciting times for Team SISD. Also, friendly reminder that our school district will be closed for the summer break, July 1st to July 5th. Yes, one week. July 1st to July 5th, our district will be closed. So, I wish everyone a much deserved break with family and friends. Go Team SISD. Thank you, President Nahara.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. Item number four, Board Honors. Mr. Escobar.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the Board, and Dr. Espinoza, Superintendent. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's honorees. If you'll please step down so we may recognize our students and staff. Our first recognition will honor Team SISD students that advanced to UIL State Academic Contest. UIL contests complement academic curriculum and help students acquire higher levels of knowledge and demonstrate mastery of numerous skills. Participants were challenged to think critically and creatively as they competed against the top students in Texas in categories such as persuasive speaking, ready writing, feature writing, and computer applications. Congratulations to these championship and award-winning students. From, absolutely. From America's High School, Sierra Rice. From Missionary College High School, Eric Corona. His sponsored teacher is Elizabeth Bonilla. From Eldorado High School, Vanessa Rodriguez. Sponsored teacher, Eileen Maris. Also from Eldorado High School, Sarah Martinez. And her sponsored teacher is Vanessa Martinez. While they're gathering for a photo, just a quick note that the portraits taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, are posted on our district website. There is a camera icon on the bottom right-hand corner of our homepage where the photos are loaded and available for free high-resolution download. Congratulations once again. Next, we will recognize Team SISD students that participated in the volunteer after-school sports program and won the 2018-19 Track and Field Championships. More than 1,000 students participated in the program this year. The athletes had a great season competing in various events such as the 50 and 100-meter dash, shot put, discus, long jump, 4x100 relay, and the 400 and 800 meter runs. Congratulations to the 2018-19 Track and Field VASP Champions. Winning first place in the senior division from John Druigan School, Drew McDonald. Amy Avila. Camille Ambright. Harmony Stewart. Alma Barotaran. Romeo Flowers. Pelumi Tewu. Josue Figueroa. Sebastian Santoio. Johanna Serano. Angelina Torres. Kristen Lopez. Cole Stewart. TT Tewu. Caroline Ann. Team assistant coaches are Tina Ambright. Melody Stewart. And they are led by Head Coach Francisco Torres Senior. Keep smiling, looking straight ahead. Congratulations once again. Next, we will recognize students for advancing to international robotics competitions. The first championship in Houston, the first LEGO League Razorback Invitational, and the first LEGO League California Open. SISD students showcase their robots' creativity and incredible STEM abilities while competing against hundreds of teams from around the world. They represented their schools and Team SISD exceptionally while at these events. Congratulations to our robotics students, teams, and their coaches. From Hernando Middle School, Samantha Villarreal. Yuridia Garcia. Kimberly Torres. Hugo Sines. And Hermann Vallarde. From Sanchez Middle School, Gerald Kearney. Renata Trejo. Melanie Molina. Their coaches are Luis Nieto. And Luis Luera. From Motwood Middle School, Soleil Herrera. Ava Reyes. Diana De La Cruz. Anna De La Cruz. Dyson Pedrosa. Daniela Cadena. Sofia Hernandez-Vasquez. Elijah Melendez. Joaquin Roman. And their coach is Raymond Bonilla. Students, teachers, will please have you return to the front for a photo. Keep looking right at the center, right at the center, Mr. Largo. Congratulations once again. Yes, this concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
The administrators are leaving too?
I think they should stay for the whole meeting. Look at them, look at them, they're trying to sneak out, look at them, look at them. Even AD's trying to make a split, look at them, look at them, look at them, trying to run out of here real quick, look at them. Don't worry, you already got the job, you're great. Hey, Coach, I was only playing, man, you really don't have to stay, alright?
Oh, he does?
I mean, I'd get him, man, I really would.
Okay, we will move on with item number five, which is open forum. We greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the Board during open forum or in regard to a specific agenda item. We're bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all the items on the agenda and therefore must limit presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the Board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda, but we will give all presentations our serious consideration. And thank you, let's proceed. Our first speaker tonight is Michelle Wernicki.
Good afternoon. I'm here with Laura Diam and Eddie Ariola, and we represent Fort Bliss MWR. We're here to present to the SISD Power Band our trophy Best of Bliss for their participation in the Armed Forces Day Parade on May 18th. A parade is an interesting thing, right? We put on events all the time at Fort Bliss. We have our Fourth of July event coming up, but a parade is different because without people like the Power Band, we don't have a parade. So, to have our participants means that we have an event. And this is the second year that the Power Band has won the Best of Bliss Award. We joke that we're hoping we get some more competition, but for right now, you guys are killing it, and we appreciate you recognizing Armed Forces Day as being a special event on Fort Bliss, and we're very, very grateful. We look forward to next year. So, we have our award we'd like to present to the Fine Arts Department.
I was about to take that trophy from you.
And our next speaker is Warren Reese.
Good evening, President Nahara, Board members, Dr. Espinoza. My name is Warren Reese, I'm a teacher at Staff Sergeant Manuel R. Puentes Middle School. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the compensation pay raise that was adopted at the last board meeting on June 4th. I did speak at that board meeting, by the way. Just to refresh everybody's memory, the Board approved a 5% increase off the midpoint, a $1,000 one-time bonus, and a $250 stipend to classroom teachers with five or more years of experience to quote "comply with House Bill 3." How's the, just so everybody knows, House Bill 3 was signed earlier this month by Governor Abbott. In House Bill 3, Subchapter B, Section 48.051, Paragraph C1, and I paraphrase, prioritize differentiated compensation for classroom teachers with more than five years of experience. The handout that I just passed out to you, I went ahead and did an analysis of this compensation package that was passed. This is what I'm here to speak to you about. If you look at the handout that I gave you, you'll see the, it's calculated off of the 2018-2019 pay scale, taken right off of our district's website, using year zero and 25 to calculate the midpoint of 54,529. I listed those by five-year increments, starting with zero going all the way up to the end of our, our pay scale, all the way to 25. The first column, you'll see the pay scale as it is right now, this year's, this past year's pay scale. The next column, you'll see the midpoint percent, the 5% increase. And then in the next column, you will see the percentage of that increase. Because it was calculated off of the midpoint, those at the lower or less experienced area of the pay scale receive a higher percentage of a pay raise than your more experienced teachers. In the next column, if you look at the next column, you'll see, this is the part where we may not be in compliance with House Bill 3 with the differentiated compensation. If you look at the first three that are listed under green, those are the three where we are in compliance, where it is differentiated, all the way up until you reach year 14. I added 14 in there because that's the point where it no longer becomes differentiated, where the increase in percentage stops with the $250 stipend. And then from there down to the end, you'll see that they are in red. Those do not meet the threshold of differentiated compensation if you look at the raise that was given at year zero for brand-new teachers. So, that's why those are all in red. This is an issue that I feel like the Board and Dr. Espinoza need to be made aware of. I'm not sure if you were made aware of that, but I was always taught, "Don't bring a problem unless you have a solution." Okay? Well, there is a solution to this. If you keep the, if you look at the next column, the next column puts in a $625 increase in compensation, but it increases, that increase starts at year 14 where the, the $250 leaves off. So, that, that, that increase goes all the way down. It does bring the percentage up. It will unfortunately cost a little bit more money because of the, the increase. It depends on the number of teachers that we have that have 14 years' experience or more. Our average year teacher experience, the last TEA website update was 13 years, just over 13 years' experience. So, this, the impact would be, in my estimation, minimal. It would only increase it by an additional $350, $375 for those teachers with 14 or more years' experience. And then on the last column there, you'll see that, what the pay scale would look like at each different point. I thank you for your time, and please consider the paper that I've prepared for you. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Reese.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Margie Perez and Maria Ornelas.
Hello, good evening. My name is Maria Ornelas, and this is my sister, Margie Perez, and together for the past 16 years, we have been a part of Christmas Trails for Toys here in the Socorro Independent School District. Christmas Trails for Toys is partnership with the SISD Lower Valley Schools that brings joy to 300 children. Together with school counselors, administrators, community volunteers, to make sure that each child receives a Christmas gift, the majority is done through fundraising and to have kind-heartedness for giving throughout our community. We have also recently started a pet kindness program in some of the schools in the north side of the freeway and our special units. Together with PetSmart, it has been very, very successful. Our purpose is just to be here to network and to see if anybody has any questions. It has been a total success for the past 16 years, and probably, I'm gonna say, I don't know, maybe 2,000, 3,000 kids have benefited it from this program, and it only comes from two sisters working together with a kind heart. Thank you so much, and if you have any questions, we are here to help.
Thank you, ladies.
Ms. Nahara?
Mr. Gunnar.
Just to say a few words about these two ladies. They go above and beyond. I've done it for years. We really do appreciate everything you do for the Lower Valley. There's a lot of kids out there don't, don't have the means to receive what they receive, and the smiles that you put on their faces every year. You're a godsend, so thank you from the bottom of our heart for everything that you do. Thank you.
Dr. Espinoza, would it be possible to have the ladies present to possibly our either Curriculum and Instruction Committee or something to hear a little bit more information about it?
Yes.
About what they're, what's on the schedule? Thank you, I appreciate that.
Our next speaker is Claudia Recoder.
Good evening, President Nahara, school board members, and Dr. Espinoza. My name is Claudia Recoder, and I have had the privilege of being an educator for the past decade. Many of those years in special education, many often question, "What is an educational diagnostician and what is it that they do?" My director, Richard Ortega, often refers to us as the backbone of special education, and I would like to agree. But many of us have a humble take on this. Not only do we help ensure that our students' IEP is being currently and correctly followed, we also help ensure that our campuses are compliant with state and federal law and local policy. But to go further, we help our parents feel the ease of knowing that their child is receiving a fair and appropriate public education. This topic hits home, as I am also a parent of a special needs child, one with severe epilepsy and autism. So, not only am I an advocate for our district, but for my child as well, a role that I take extremely seriously. As a member of AFT and the As a member of AFT and the Special Education Department, I am urging you, on the behalf of the Educational Diagnosticians and Speech Language Pathologists, to allow us to address the school board regarding the grievance on the agenda tonight in your closed forum section. We would like our voices to be heard in how this issue has impacted our department. We would like for real due process by having you, school board members, listen to our side of this grievance. Thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Vibert Ski.
Madam President, distinguished members of the school board, Mr. Superintendent, members of the cabinet, senior administrators, staff, teachers, employees, union members, supporters, and friends. First of all, I wish that you would forgive my less-than-perfect appearance before you today, and that's because I was out of town at one of these wonderful and famous beekeeping sessions, and in response to what I wanted to do today, I had to drive directly from that beekeeping conference all the way back to the boardroom here. I want you to know I wasn't followed by bees, so that's not the reason why I stopped home. It's just that I was pressed for time. The issue that I want to deal with has to do with an email that was sent on June 4th. But before I go to that, I wish to... I wish to congratulate all the teachers who were recently promoted into administration, and I want to congratulate them on their hard work and all the great things we expect from them in the future. Madam President, the reason I'm here is because I want to extend appreciation on behalf of all the teachers, and in particular, on behalf of the substitute teachers of which I'm in that rank. Recently, we received an email on June 4th that was most delightful to read. Normally, reading emails is usually seen as a chore and something you want to get through with as quickly as possible, but to be honest with you, I read my email at least three times, just to be sure that the information was correct. Now, I know that some may say that 5% of the midpoint is not a large or significant increase, but I want to say that every increase that recognizes the challenges that we are facing as teachers is appreciated. More significantly, let's remember that what we can't get today, we can always get tomorrow. So a little piece today, a little piece tomorrow, and everything should be all right. I also want to commend those teachers who were participating in all the wonderful ceremonies that we had for the graduations of the high school. I think this year, our ceremony was particularly of a high standard, and all the people who went into planning and executing those ceremonies, I wish to congratulate them on that, and I wish to encourage them to keep the same format with any improvements that they can make for the... for the next school year. That being said, next month, I would be engaging on an effort to lobby the school board members on two matters of particular concern. As you know, the new school year is coming up, and before you know it, we'll be entering that weird period between September 15th and October 15th, and it is our hope at Eastlake Lions Club and in the George Washington and Abraham Lincoln Club to honor Cesar Chavez this year with a number of activities, one of them being a run and a fun walk linking the old Socorro to the new part of the Socorro Independent School District, and the other one being, of course, the Christmas parade that comes in December. Now, before I lobby you, I must meet with the PRO over here, so we're gonna work out of time during this week or next week where we can finalize all of that, and then after I'm finished with the PRO, the lobbying will begin. Now, once again, to keep on track, I want to thank the board for the 5% increase. It is appreciated, and we look forward to next year's negotiation, hopefully when it goes up to 6%. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next agenda item is public hearings. A, Every Student Succeeds Act, the ESA public notice meeting. Dr. Starkey.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the board, and Dr. Espinoza. I'm here before you tonight to go over our annual federally funded programs, our Every Student Succeeds Act public notice meeting. We must do this in each and every year under federal law to discuss what our hall will be for this year in our federal funds, our titles in the Every Student Succeeds Act. So I'll go ahead and begin with that. Always, in the beginning, we discuss that it's been in place in many several areas since nineteen... been in place in these areas since 1965. It's been renamed and reauthorized a number of times, and it always goes back to the... our students who have economic disadvantages and closing the achievement gap between them and their non-economically disadvantaged counterparts. Okay? So if we look there, this is going to be our funding for this year in those five areas, which Title I Part A is the largest, and then we have some smaller but still significant ones below that for a total of $15,210,511. What we'll begin with then is Title I Part A. That's, of course, our improvement of basic programs. In this one, 70% of that funding is required to go to the campuses so they can budget accordingly based on their needs and in places where their student improvement is to take place through their needs assessments. And then we have several other areas, a large parent involvement component being one, and then certain... certain programs and... and resources that we farm out here at the district level. And then I'm going to just go through these shortly. There's a listing of each allocation by high school, then by middle school, then by K8s, and then by elementary schools, and we've going to... we have those set for what we're going to... each school's going to be receiving, and after... if this board amends, approves that amendment tonight, then those are going to be ready to go as of July 1st. So I won't take too much time on that. It's a lengthy list, as every school, of course, is getting their share. Okay? And moving on from that, that would be all of the Title I. Then we have the next fund, which is Title I Part C. That is our migrant education program. And that one, the vast majority, our NGS clerk, she's our recruiter, our liaison, she's part of that, our temporary instructional aides, certain extra duty for tutoring, that's where the vast majority of our migrant funding goes to try to recruit students, identify them so they can receive services, and then once they are identified, their instructional focus is paramount. So that is why the largest piece is there. Okay, Title II Part A is our federal fund that is for preparing, training, and recruiting high-quality teachers and principals, other school leaders. So there, we're talking about instructional officers and staff development to try to increase student achievement and promote leadership, you know, help people to become... come from teachers just like the ones we saw today, you know, move up and continue to allow students... most big-time one in this is the equity, making sure that our low-income students have the same access to effective teachers the same way that our non-disadvantaged students do. And again, the vast majority of that goes to salaries with nine instructional officers strong and one administrative specialist dedicated to providing them with everyday assistance, which is the largest part of that. They are in the schools often, and then a few little small amounts there to round that out. Okay, Title III Part A is the federal arm of English-language learner instruction. If you all have gotten a look at a budget, which I know many of you have a number of times, we also have a state bilingual fund, but this one goes even beyond that. This is our federal English-language learner fund, so we can have English-language learners close those additional gaps between those students who are English-dominant, and we receive money in that. Portion of it, the majority of it, about two-thirds, goes to salaries because we have instructional aides on each and every campus, and also extra duty because there's certain things like the summer ESL Academy that's taken on for extra instruction. Little bit more... little bit more on instructional supplies and some technology in this one, okay, relating to English... supplemental English-language instruction. Okay, Title IV Part A is the last one. That's student support and academic enrichment, and that's well-rounded education, that's safe and healthy students, also effective use of technology. I must say on that one, not loading up on infrastructure, this is very different. Project Lead the Way would be a perfect example, okay, of what we would be doing with something like that, STEM, that sort of thing. So we have several initiatives in Title IV. Biggest one that we've got going right now that's probably most known is dual language. Okay, a lot of that is funded out of Title IV, such as the instructional officer, but this pie is split up a little bit more than the others because we see a little bit of salaries and some extra duty pay in this, but then there's also professional development, instructional supplies, technology. This travel for professional development, this one is very different, but the fact that there's several facets in this one, that makes it a good thing that we don't have it too, what is it, skewed in one direction. And again, this was a required... a required hearing to present to you all as board and superintendent and to the public, and this time, that concludes my presentation unless anyone has any questions for me.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay. This being a public hearing, if anyone would like to speak about our ESA... our Every Student Succeeds Act, you may do so at this time. Don't run over Dr. Starkey, please. We need him. And since there is no one lining up to speak, Dr. Starkey, thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
And our next public hearing is B, Proposed 2019-20 School District Budget and Discussion of Proposed Tax Rate. Mr. Raisa.
Yes, Dr. Nahara, I'm sorry.
Okay, yes.
President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Tonight, the administration is conducting a public hearing on the proposed budget and tax rate for the 2019-20 fiscal year. The date and time of the hearing was published both in the El Paso Times and the West Texas Courier as required by state law, the purpose of which is to provide the public with information on the budget and the tax rate that's being proposed and to allow the stakeholders of the community to provide input to the governing board. So with respect to the general fund revenue assumptions, the revenues are based on the following assumptions: that the district's property tax... property valuations will increase by 6.52% for a projected taxable value base of $10.3 billion; that our projected average daily attendance will increase by half of a percent to $43,537; that our weighted average daily attendance will increase by 0.59% to $59,498; that our state funding values, determined state funding, will be $10.2 billion; and that there will be a tax decrease in the tax rate for maintenance and operations by 1.2 cents to 97 cents. With respect to the revenue estimates in the general fund, we're projecting that total revenues will be $408.1 million. That's an increase of 7.85%. There's an increase of $3.9 million in local resources due to increases in property values. The most significant increase will be in our state funding, which shows an increase of $26.4 million, and that's due to House Bill 3. Now, we are gonna be using about $14.6 million in fund balance to balance the budget in the general fund. With respect to the child nutrition program, we're projecting revenues of about $31.9 million. That's an increase of $1.9 million or 6.62%. The increment is primarily due to federal sources and increases in anticipated meals that are gonna be served, and we're projecting to use $731,000 in fund balance to balance the budget for our child nutrition program. And with respect to debt service, we're looking at projected revenues of $61.5 million. That's an increase of $4.7 million, and these increases, again, are due to increases in property values. So with respect to the budget for 2019-20, the general fund, the budget is impacted by the following items. For number one, a general pay increase of 5% to teachers, nurses, librarians, counselors, and all other job classes. A lump-sum payment of $1,000 to teachers, nurses, librarians, counselors, and all other employees that are eligible. Just as a point of reference, the 2% pay raise for teachers is $1,091. So for all intensive purposes, you're looking at about a 7% raise for teachers. $250 stipend for all classroom teachers with more than five years of experience, an increase in the daily pay rate for substitute teachers, additional instructional positions due to growth, and additional instructional positions for the special education program. Funding to staff the new Cactus Trails Elementary School. Funding for additional salaries, textbooks, and transportation for the early college high schools at El Dorado, Pebble Hills, and Eastlake High Schools. Funding to provide laptops for all our incoming freshman class at all our comprehensive high schools. Funding for the grade-level transitions at Antoine and at Paso and the Norton campuses, and finally, funding to purchase 20 new school buses. This is... this slide reflects the manner in which the board will adopt the budget by fund and by function. The major budgets that will be adopted by the board are the general fund, the child nutrition program, and the debt service fund. The total amount of these combined budgets is $517,41,022. As mentioned before, and is required by Section 44.004 of the Texas Education Code, the administration has published a notice of this public hearing in the El Paso Times and West Texas Courier on June 6th. It published the time and date of this hearing with the intended purposes of adopting or proposing the following tax rates: for the maintenance and operations, a tax rate of 97 cents per $100 of assessed valuation; for interest and sinking fund, a tax rate of .398954 per $100 of assessed valuation; for a title tax rate of $1368954. Again, this is a 1.2 cent tax rate decrease from the prior year, and again, this decrease is mandated by House Bill 3. Now, the governing board will consider approving these proposed tax rates and the resolution in August, and we will conduct a public hearing to consider those tax rates at that time. Submitted here for your review is the proposed tax rates for the surrounding school districts. The governing boards of each particular school district may or may not approve the tax rates that are being proposed, and as you can see, Socorro ISD, along with several other school districts, continues to have the lowest maintenance and operation tax rate in the area. And as published in the El Paso Times, presented is the tax impact on the average resident for the Socorro Independent School District. Note that the district has published a tax decrease from the prior year, and as you can see, there's an increase in the average taxable value of the average homeowner. So this increase in value shows a tax impact of $55.76. So these are preliminary... we're using preliminary values here, so when the certified values are received in July, this might result in a slower tax impact. And finally, listed is the district's voter-approved tax rollback rate, which is the highest rate that the board can approve without holding the tax ratification election. So that is the information in the public hearing. I'm certainly here to answer any questions with respect to the budget that we're gonna request for you to approve or the proposed tax rates.
Are there any questions?
roses in the room?
No. It's a public hearing. Okay. Nice try. And at this... since this is a public hearing to discuss our district budget and proposed tax rate, if anyone would like to speak on this matter, they may do so at this time.
Hi, my name is Warren Reese again. Our CFO presented a presentation that was great. My only questions about this is the increase in the state allotment was $1,050 per student. So my question is, does that $26 million account for the decrease? Because we have over 46,000 students in this district, which comes out to about $47 million in an increase. The CFO presented a $26 million increase in the state allotment. That's my only question on the budgeting.
So first of all, we're not getting the full allotment because we have a tax... compressed tax rate of 91 cents. So it's important to keep in mind that we're getting about 96% of the total basic allotment.
allotment. And the $26 million is an additional amount over and above what we're getting from the state. So, I mean, you're looking at about $273 million in state revenue that we're receiving. So the increase is just the increase over and above last year.
Any other public comments?
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reis.
And I want to congratulate Ms., uh, Ms. Nakada on your doctorate, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, where's my doctorate? I'm going to say that. You know, do a candy or water.
I want one of those, but I don't want to work for it.
No, Tony will just give it to you. Okay, item number seven, district reports, facilities report, Mr. Eington.
Good evening, President Nakada, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My report starts on page 41, you can follow in the book, but those pages have been updated since they're about two weeks old right now. The first project on the facility report will be, um, Cactus Trails Elementary School. Of course, this school everybody's aware of, will be opening, uh, next month. Uh, we are working to, uh, finish a lot of the interiors and exterior and doing a lot of finished work, uh, and it's moving, and, and a lot of progress is being made. The Bond Accountability Committee toured this campus last week, and, and they were very, uh, impressed with the facility, and we are working to finalize everything and get it open. We are planning to, uh, receive some furniture next week, so we are working with the contractor to get a temporary certificate on OX, but C, TCO, in order for us to start placing some furniture. This is an aerial that shows one of the parking lots, and you can see that it's, uh, we're doing a lot of landscaping, pavement, asphalt has been down, curbs and colors are in place, so, uh, we are, uh, moving, there is a basketball play area in the back, and I think I have a little bit closer picture of that a little bit later. Uh, this is kind of the, the front entrance, the other side of the building, and it shows that we're, uh, working, still working on the front canopy in the entrance, uh, along with doing landscaping and, and exterior work on the building. Another side view of the exterior. The interior, this is a typical classroom, and, and majority of the classrooms look like this. They have the L, LBT flooring, the rubber flooring installed. You see the millwork in place, those are all modular, uh, millwork that can be moved around if, if so desire, and, and you can see that we've dropped ceilings and light fixtures, and, and really, uh, the classrooms and everything are looking in real good shape. The exterior, these are a couple of the, uh, corridors from the hub areas. You see that the flooring is down, and you see that we have the, uh, ceramic tile on the walls in the corridors, and we are installing the ceilings, the light fixtures are in, but the ceiling needs to go in. This is a picture of the kitchen, uh, a lot of the, uh, kitchen equipment is installed, uh, the flooring has been put down, and, uh, Ms. Janoski and the Child Nutrition Services is anxious to take over and, and do their cleaning once we get approval and, and take possession from the contractor. This is the basketball court, uh, that is, uh, at Cactus Trails in the back. The next building is the Technology Service Center. This facility was bid, uh, last, uh, week or so ago. We are in the process of negotiating with the, uh, low bidder. There was only two bids that were turned in, uh, timing has basically caught up with Socorro, all the subs are busy. Uh, we, I was surprised that we only had two bids. That's the first time that that's probably happened in, in a lot of years, as far as I can remember. But we're, we're looking at the proposals and negotiating with purchasing and, and working with the, uh, uh, low bidder on that in order for us to, uh, bring back a, hopefully a negotiated price in our, at our July meeting. So that's where we're at on the Technology Service Center. The auxiliary gyms, we are working on, uh, getting in daily our GL test, testing reports, uh, from the, uh, engineers to determine what our foundation requirements are at our 16 campuses. Uh, all of them are complete with the exception of a few of the campuses, and we're working on to get those, uh, turned in so the architect can final the draw, finalize his drawings and put them out for proposal, uh, in the next 30 to 45 days. And these are the three groups. Socorro High School. Socorro High School is coming along. Uh, we've had a couple of meetings with the administration and the staff reviewing, uh, Phase One that was approved at last month's meeting. And let me get to my notes, please. Tomorrow, we're gonna, uh, the GMP was approved on May 21st for Phase One. Just wait, just wait. And we're gonna advertise tomorrow and, uh, and have a pre-bid on the, June the 26th, and we'll have openings on July the 17th. And you can't wait any further. There it is. There is two new basketball courts off of Rio Vista.
I appreciate that, Mr. Reis.
Along with the five that are up there, too.
If you can add some more, I'll never complain.
No, you're actually getting one more than the rest of the high schools.
No, but I really do appreciate.
Yes.
I apologize.
No worries.
I really do appreciate that.
You want to move your mic, though? So people can hear.
Sorry. I really do appreciate that, and, um...
And it, it worked out good, we just had to move the detention pond back a little bit. That's that blue area, that's not the aquatics where...
And again, you know, it was just something that, uh, you know, the basketball courts in the back, they weren't going to get used.
And these will be lit.
They will be lit, they'll have lighting.
Yeah, they're right off the student park.
You're gonna see a big difference once, um, this is built on, you know, families going out there and, and our students going out there to go play at night like every other high school. You know, they're up in front, they're off Rio Vista where they can park and, you know, they can be seen. So I really do appreciate that, and saying thank you so much for, for doing that.
So we're, we're working on that. It does not show on this plan, but this is the phasing plan that was approved, but it will be incorporated in, in this plan. Uh, the phasing plan, like I said, is advertised these next two weeks, and we take the proposals on June the 17th, I mean, July the 17th, uh, for the, the work. We are also working on a, uh, virtual video on this campus, uh, to present right after the start of the school to the community. Uh, we should have preliminary, uh, uh, review of that video tour, uh, next month, and then we'll finalize it, and then right after the start of school, we'll call a community meeting, so we, we'll have a virtual tour of the facility. Mountwood High School, we have started the construction on the sports lighting, and that will continue. Uh, we also are working on the remaining packages, and we will be bringing those, uh, to the board later for that guaranteed maximum price, but Mountwood is started, and hopefully we'll, next month, we'll show some pictures of that. Americas High School, we, uh, we are working with the architect, uh, to have a budget meeting, and I think that is scheduled this week on Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken, tomorrow, to review their budget and, and hopefully to start, uh, looking at a guaranteed maximum price for their sports lighting package. El Dorado was the other one that was approved last month, uh, and they are in the process of getting with purchasing and working with them to establish the bid dates in order to start bidding out the sports lighting. And we also have looked at the remaining, uh, packages or the remaining GMP on El Dorado, and that, that budget looks good, uh, for now. The next project is the new, uh, stadium, SAC number two. Uh, we had a kickoff meeting on June the 7th, uh, with all of the departments that were involved in that, fine arts, athletics, uh, security, uh, and, uh, Ms., uh, Lucero, the marketing director, met with the architects, and we had a very good, uh, first meeting, and we are scheduling another meeting for the second week in July when we come back from the break, uh, in order to continue that project. The new combo school, we have two agenda items on that later, uh, to hopefully, uh, get approval to, uh, for a professional service and then a construction manager, uh, but that will be at a, uh, a, a later agenda item. And this has been a issue, these are other projects. This is Horizon Heights, if you don't recognize it, and the, the street that goes in front of it that kind of dead ends. Uh, I thought, yeah, in the, my left-hand corner, and there's a blue little bubble up there that says "house to be demolished" or "to be removed." That house has been bought and by the developer, and they are going to be removing that. The email that I got from them on June the 4th was that, uh, contracts have been approved, and they are working on to start construction, uh, anywhere from 30 to 45 days. It should only take about three to four months to complete, however, working with the various entities in that area, there's multiple entities. It's not in the city of Socor, I mean, city of Horizon, it's in El Paso, so you're dealing with the county, you're dealing with a lot of entity, and the developer is not experiencing demolishing the houses, so they're gonna have to work around that. I know somebody that probably would do that, but, uh, I can do that, too. But anyway, uh, the timeline, the email that I got from them basically said it should be a three to, uh, four months project, but they said, "Give us to the end of the year." So December, end of December.
Tell them one Sunday.
It's mine. Helen Ball, Helen Ball, we're doing a lot of refreshing, uh, furniture refresh during the intercession that has been keeping warehouse and, and the departments busy by assembly. On one side, it's, it's the, in a classroom, on the left-hand side in the classroom, and on my right-hand side is the assembly area in the gymna, I mean, the cafeteria where we're assembling everything and then dispersing them out to the classrooms. Antwine, Antwine and PDN has taken a lot of our efforts, uh, because of the transition, and we got a lot of people working, uh, not only on those campuses, but on the dual language at CHOK and, and, and other portable relocation. But this is some LED lighting that we did before and after, uh, in the, uh, in the gymnasium at Antwine. This shows that we removed a lot of the storage areas in the classroom, and our department has gone in there and built some casework and millwork along the walls for their storage and then clean up the classrooms. Uh, this is the library. Uh, what you're looking at was the old circulation decks that has been removed, that wall demolished, and on the right-hand side, that's actually the entrance off the corridor to the room. You can see a, kind of a new opening into a, uh, a room that we made, uh, in the remodel of it at, at Antwine, in the library. And they'll get a new circulation desk and everything. Benito, we've installed some new plank, playground equipment, and that completes my report.
Are there any questions? Ms. Reington, thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Getta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
Wow.
That's a first.
Good. Nine A, consider approval of 2019-20 school district budget.
President Nakada, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, for your review and for your consideration or approval, we're presenting 2019-20 school budget. It is presented by fund, which are the columns, and by function, which are the rows. We're asking for your consideration approval.
So move.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Gondola and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Reis.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item nine B, consider approval of administrator-certified and non-certified contract recommendations. Mr. Kimpoya.
Good evening, President Nakada, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Just like last month, I'm here to present an additional list of certified and, uh, non-certified administrators for your approval and receiving their 2019-20 contract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Getta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And Mr. Kimpoya, still your turn. Consider approval of professional contract recommendations for 2019, 2020 school year.
So same thing, this one is the list for teachers that are additional to the other list that I presented to you all in receiving their contract for next year.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Gondola. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimpoya. And item D, consider approval of professional services for new combo school, uh, in the Eastlake area. Mr. Eington.
Yes, President Nakada, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, uh, on page 175 of your booklet. We, uh, this project, if you recall, was awarded, and then we rescinded the, the bids and, because we were gonna build a separate middle school and a separate elementary school, and then we want, we looked at, uh, some land, and the land, uh, allowed us to combine it for the new board members into one, one site, so we decided to go for a new combo school. We couldn't, um, by rules and regulation, couldn't change order of the project. So, uh, in doing so, we re-advertised as a new combo school. This combo school will be located in the Eastlake area. We are in final negotiation, uh, of the property and should have that pretty well wrapped up here, uh, any day. Uh, we had 14 proposals on this, uh, site, and, uh, they were listed in your, in your, on the sheet, one through 14 in alphabetical order, and I believe you received something in your Friday package on the evaluation, evaluators, administrator review committee, how we ranked those. And at the board meetings, uh, I will make the, uh, recommendation of order of preference as follow. Uh, number one would be Mahias Mora Architects, number two is PSRBB Architects, and number three, MNK Architects. The approval of those three firms, uh, will allow us to start our negotiation and bring back a contract to you in July. If we like the procurement process that we've always followed, if we cannot establish a, uh, negotiated fee with the first one, we go to the second one and go, and never can go back. So, um, administration recommends approval in, in the order of preference of Mahias Mora, PSRBB, and MNK for the new combo school professional services.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Garcia. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion approves. And, uh, nine E, consider approval of construction management at risk for new combo school. Mr. Eington.
Yes, the same thing on this, we, uh, uh, it was a CSP project at first, and when we combined it to a new combo school, the board at that time, uh, rec, we recommended that we go out as a construction... board at that time, we recommended that we go out as a construction manager at risk, and we had three proposals on that, and the order is Baines General Contractor, Buford Thompson, and Dan, Dan Techs Construction. That is the order of preference that we would recommend.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Gandetta. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Eington.
Thank you.
Item nine F, consider approval of revisions to local policy. Dr. Graham.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. We have for your consideration your approval of policies DEE, EIE, and FDB as presented for revisions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Gandetta. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Graham.
Thank you.
Item nine G, consider approval of 2019-20 board meeting calendar and agenda cycle. Each of you received the calendar in your board packet. Does anyone have any questions or comments about our next year's board meeting calendar?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And nine H, consider approval of delegate and alternate for the TAFSA-TASB convention delegate assembly.
I'd like to make a motion to nominee Cynthia Nahara. I'm sorry, Dr. Nahara.
Doctor, yeah, there you go.
Second.
Wait, an alternate as well?
Yes, we need an alternate as well.
Make a motion for nominee Helica Rodriguez as alternate.
Really? Really? We got two new guys up here, and you... Alright.
The girls will handle this, thank you very much. Just saying.
I mean, I believe we made you do it one year.
You did, that's exactly what you did.
That was not a good thing.
This is kind of one of those you throw people under the bus kind of day, you know?
Thank you. Thank you, David.
And thank God we threw our board president.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Morales to name Cynthia Nahara as the delegate and Ms. Rodriguez as the alternate. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mena's not here. You know the rule, you're not here, you get thrown under the bus. He's not here, this is like the perfect time to throw him under the bus.
We only do that to you.
Oh, see, that happens.
There you go. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item ten, executive session. The meeting is to be closed for discussion with legal counsel regarding requests from HD for tutoring reimbursement regarding M. Melcher versus SISD and regarding Level Three grievance appeal filed by AFT on behalf of certain diagnosticians and SLP members to discuss personnel and real estate matters and to consider administrative recommendations for principal positions at Campestre Elementary and Montwood Middle School under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. And we are adjourned, the time is seven fourteen. We are back in session, the time is eight thirty-eight. We'll continue with item eleven, new business, A, discussion and possible action regarding M. Melcher versus SISD. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Steve Blanco, legal counsel for the district, gave you an updating closed session on the Melcher lawsuit, and in particular, the notice that was provided by Summit Risk on behalf of the district's insurance carrier, Indian Harbor, and Indian Harbor and Summit Risk have issued notice to the district that they want to consent to settlement, and that consent would be on the terms that we discussed in closed session. This is strictly for financial reasons that this is being recommended by the carrier. Because of that, it's my recommendation that you acknowledge, accept, and agree with the insurance carrier to consent to settle the lawsuit and the terms we discussed in closed session.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gandetta and a second by Mr. Getta. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. B, discussion and possible action regarding Level Three grievance appeal filed by AFT on behalf of certain diagnosticians and SLP members. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you. At the previous meeting in May, you received the record and the summary of the grievance following the hearing at Level Three and the recommendation issued by Linda Cooper, who's the hearing officer. Under the board's grievance policy, the board now has the opportunity to decide whether you want to take action tonight on that grievance or if you want to allow the opportunity for the group to make a presentation to the board in connection with that grievance. Based on our discussion in closed session and review of the record, I believe that there is some desire by some of the board members to allow for an oral presentation to be made. That would have to be scheduled, notice would have to be provided to AFT so that they can participate, and that will be at a future date between now and the next board meeting. So if the board does want to allow oral argument, we would need a motion authorizing the administration to issue notice and to schedule a level, I'm sorry, to schedule a hearing before the board trustees at a future date.
So moved. Second motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Gandetta and a second by Mr. Getta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
And I abstain.
And the motion carries. Item eleven C, consider, thank you, Mr. Blanco.
Thank you.
Eleven C, consider approval of administrative recommendations. Dr. Espinoza, A is Campestre Elementary.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board. Administration recommends Ms. Jennifer Avila to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as a new principal at Campestre Elementary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gandetta and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And item one B, Montwood Middle School.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board. Administration recommends Ms. Melissa Martinez to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as the new principal of Montwood Middle School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Gandetta. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. If there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned, the time is eight forty-one.